I'd like to call the City Council Meeting of Monday, August 25th to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cameron.
Here.
Alderman Anderson.
Here.
Alderman Morgan Adams.
Here.
Alderman Dash.
Here.
Alderman Dolek.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge.
Under the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, equal and just with a reading justice.
Item three, approval of minutes. Omnibus, is there executive session individual? I'd like to look for an omnibus motion for the regular city council meeting minutes of July 28th, 2025, the executive session minutes of July 22nd, 2024, the executive session meeting minutes of April 15th, 2025, the executive session meeting minutes of April 28th, 2025, and the executive session minutes of June 9th, 2025. None of the executive sessions will be for public release. I just need a motion to approve those.
So moved, Anderson.
Second.
Cameron.
You have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cameron.
Aye.
Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams.
Aye.
Alderman Dash.
Aye.
Alderman Dolek.
Aye.
Motion passes. Number four, presentations, CM on the screen there. Item A, Laserfish Software Status Report and Update by Jordan Johnson. You're up.
Alrighty, can you guys hear me? Yes.
Yes.
Alright, cool. So, thank you guys so much for having me today and letting me give an update on the scanning and file management project that the building department has undertaken. Sorry that I can't be in there in person. I am currently, I just started grad school today in DC, so at least it's a good reason. Alright, so a little history for, on the subject for those who don't know and the public. So in 2024, the city council approved bids for microsystems for mass scanning of critical history of building files, including permits, PZBA, engineering, and the former Old Town Sanitary District, just to name a few. The council has also approved the purchase of a records management software called Laserfish, provided by TKB Associates. This is vital because of the unfortunate events we have had in the past with the city hall burning down in the early 2000s and the flooding in the 2017-ish range. So currently, we have outlined, the building department has outlined three phases, currently for the final, the file scannings. So the first phase was the historical building permits. So we started with the files that were taking up the most space and were critical to the histories of properties and everything, so, which were and are the building permits. So we had Microsystems, the scanning company, take and scan about 125 cubic feet, which basically correlates to 125 banker boxes of historical permits, which broke out to be about 6,500 permits. So Microsystems scanned those, and the first round of mass scanning was just completed about four weeks ago at this time. Microsystems scanned all 125 cubic feet of these files. They did an amazing, amazing job with this project. The scanned documents met all the requirements of the bid, the management software, and the regulations placed on us by record retention laws. So that first phase is complete. So on to the second phase, which we have deemed to be the PZBA, ZDA, and planning commissions. So before the ZDA and planning commissions merged together, so we have three separate whole boxes of different committees and commissions due to that. So this will be the next step of the process. We'll be filing the former zoning board, everything like that, and going all the way up to any of the most recent PZBA files that have not already been scanned into our internal server. These files, I would deem to be some of the most critical to our record retention as our current record schedule sets them to be kept permanently due to the how, like variations last forever with the property, it just doesn't follow the one owner. So I have estimated about 40 cubic feet of this, and the process will look like how we went through all the permit files, which would take some time, but it makes sure that we don't have redundancies, we're not paying for multiple copies of the same piece of paper as back before scanning, they just like to print out multiple copies just to ensure that they had what they needed and it wouldn't get lost. So that process will just be going through the folders, indexing them, so we know what folders we have, what cases we have, and where they will be at. So that will be phase two, and then phase three, and some more phases. That is still in the works, whether we want to do like Old Town Sanitary District files that we inherited from the defunct district, or if we want to do engineering files or water connection files, that is still up in the air due to, we should focus on one phase at a time, but also talks about which one will be and how we go through the process of these. So that is the scanning side of the projects that we have had. So now more on the software side. Laserfish, as I said, is such an amazing software. It really has helped us streamline the processes of the building department to be more efficient. I would just like to take this quick second to thank the expertise of Jerry Brett Barth, who is our liaison in TKB Associates. He helped us in every step of the process to get the software up and running and to where it is today. We have only set up the repository within the software, as the public portal and other features will need more envisioning, and all of those features need the repository setup before we can do anything. But since we have this repository setup, we are working on moving our internal server onto the cloud-based software. This takes some time because each file must be reviewed for consistency within the workflow rules and to eliminate any redundancies, whether it be multiple scans of one item or somehow that permit got scanned by Microsystems. We don't need two of the exact same file and permit within the server taking up space. This software, so currently, since we have the repository setup and the workflow setup, we have now transferred over to scanning all of our new permits to be filed directly within the Laserfish software. So we are no longer just saving it onto our internal soft, server, not software, our internal server, so that we can use this resource that we have bought and set up. So the software has so many capabilities that will be amazing and help us on the building and department level, building and development level, such as the public portal, so the public can see certain public records, forms and surveys, which will help streamline the permit process and cut down on some of the administrative side of the process, as it will give us different tasks and everything once somebody submits a certain form. The system workflows help us file these PDFs, JPGs, whatever, quickly and with accuracy. So it will help streamline and condense really the workload within the whole saving and saving of these files. So now that I laid out where we're at, I'd like to show you guys three little things of Laserfish. So I'll be going over the repository, and one of the features that I think helps out the most, especially if we have FOIA requests or we're trying to find certain files with certain text. So it's the search feature because we can now search via text in a document. And then I will show you guys the address files, and then also show you the workflows and automated filing. Ready, let me share my screen. Why is it not showing up? Oh, there we go. Okay, so on your screen, you will see the overall Laserfish system. So where it says building department, once this software has been moved to more departments, we will have a folder that says finance department, administrative department, or whatever we want to call those things. So each one will be for a department, and we can set access rights, so somebody from public works can't get into the building files, or somebody from finance can't get into administrative files. We can set that to be custom. It definitely is not going to be, it doesn't have to be exactly like how I said, but it can be very customized on who has access to what. So once you go in, this is just the whole repository as a whole. So once you go into the building department, so what we have set up so far is the basics of what we need, which is the address folders. And contractor, I haven't put anything into that file yet, that was just setting it up so I can work through the process and learn how to set up workflows for that. So down at the bottom where it says XXXZZ, we put any new file that we scanned in the office into the ZZ incoming, where then we tell it where to go and everything like that. The YY is just all of our old internal server stuff, so that we do have those separated, so I know what is from the server and what is brand new. So Jen and Elise, Dan, Andrew, anybody in the building department puts things into the incoming documents. And then the XX is for any mass scanning that we have done by Microsystems. So within the address folders, we have streamlined the process so that everybody's able to see the legal street name, as we've had in the past issues with spelling of street names, or putting north-south on the end or at the start. So we thought that putting the legal street names on here is the easiest way to streamline this process, to make it more easy to search and things like that. So like if you go, let's go into Alderman Avenue. So here, we see all of currently what we have scanned into Alderman Avenue, so it just lists out all of the addresses that we have files for in the system already. And if an address is not in there, that means we don't have it in the system yet, or there is no files currently for those. Anything with street, with directionals, we make a whole separate folder within the street name. This is a mess because of the Microsystems, I am cleaning all of these up, but at the bottom, you can see East Kent McDonald and West Kent McDonald. So anything with East Kent McDonald will be filed in here. So the addresses are in numerical order so that we can see what's on East Kent McDonald. So that is the address folders. So I'll show you guys the workflows now. So if anything is coming in that, any new documents, new permits, new, any new paper that we need scanned into the system, we just go into, you can either scan it directly into Laserfish, but since I don't have a scanner with me, I can't show you guys that part of it, but I can show you how we load into it. So we just go into the import, then choose the file that you want. I have already pre-selected one to be the test. So open, then it OCRs it, which makes it so that it can recognize all the text within the file, so that we can use that text search feature that I was talking about earlier. And then it will just import it, and then it's in there. So from there, you select whatever file you put in, and then it will ask you to pick a template. So the template invokes the workflows that we have set up. So for building permits, you put in all the information that you have on the property or the file, and you always have to put a permit number, always had to put a permit type, and always had to put a permit document type for the workflow to work correctly. That's just so that we have that streamlined and more efficient process. So it's all, all good to go. And then we have workflows for code enforcement, elevator programs, and the rental program. So those work basically the same way as the building permits, but it's just a little, it's unique to the situation. So code enforcement and elevator programs need two different types of information from a property, so we just input different information and it automatically files those away in the correct space. So let's just do 111 Aberdeen, because that's the first address within our system, alphabetically. So permit number, let's do 125, test two, permit type, let's say it's a patio. And then under permit document type, let's do approved plans. So once you press save, that sets off a chain reaction within all the coding and everything. So you press refresh, and it's gone. That means it was saved correctly to the specifications that you asked it to do. So let's scroll up to Aberdeen, and then we see that 111, and then within that, we have the permit folder, and then the 2025 test two patio permit folder, and then that is where that one file is. So that is our approved plans, and it's right where it should be. So let me just, so that we don't get it mixed up with anything, let me just quickly delete. And then the fun, the fun feature, I think, is the search, so we can search any word. So let's do Laserfish, because I know there's not many things that have Laserfish in the text, because the more text there is, the longer it does take. So here, we have three different, four different files that have Laserfish within the texts. For these test files, for any file that it shows that has that text, it shows you what, where it is contained within the pages, and also where the folder is at, the folder path, so it tells you what, where it is, and everything like that. That will, once it is transferred over to administration, and even for us currently, this will help make FOIA requests less of a burden. Alrighty, and yeah, that is all I have for you guys.
Just really quick, Jordan, are you setting up all the parameters for how things are going to be named, called? Because if a permit comes in, it's a new address, somebody's got to make sure they put it in right. Is there going to be one person doing that?
Yes. No, so that is Jen, Elise, I'm working with them, and working with everybody to learn how to add, like if we get a brand new street name. I'm working with them to teach them how to input a new street name or input a new permit type, if there's a new permit type that we haven't had before within the system. And that, I have also written it all down within a standard of practice for the city, where I just explain how to do that. So multiple people will be able to know how to do that. And also Jerry Bart, Bart.
Brett Barth.
Bart Brith, Bart Brith. He will, if anybody has any questions, he is more than happy to help also. He's been a great asset with setting this up.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
For that presentation. I'm jealous, I wish I was going to graduate school at North Washington, but I'm not. But good luck with your studies, and thank you for agreeing to help continue with this process.
Thank you for having me tonight.
Mayor, Mayor and Council, just to let you know, one of the biggest challenges was for Jordan to streamline and put the legal street names in, because over the years, whoever put it in, there was no consistencies, there was no standardization. So the big task with this project is to be able to have, when you pull up the list, that's the street, period. Then you figure what, east or west, north-south, and then putting in the right, the address. And there's a set address file, so that's going to be huge. We've already used the system internally, even out of the repository, I had some questions. A person was looking for a plat of survey from 2002 that was scanned, and we already had it back in the system. So I did a search on just the number, and sure enough, the plat of survey was in their permit project from 2020, 2002, and they were able to use it for their shed.
Nice.
So it's already helping, and at the end of the day, as we get better with the information and how to use it, it'll go faster. But Jordan's did a wonderful job with this program, and it's going to pay dividends for us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jordan.
We'll move on to public comments on agenda matters. Any slips go out?
We actually have appointments before that, but also.
Oh, do we?
Yeah.
Oh, we do. Always trying to push this thing along. All right, let's go back to five, appointments, confirmations, and proclamations. Appointment of Peter Falcone as the city administrator, and consideration of concurrence of appointment by the city council effective August 5th, 2025. So with that, I would need a motion to approve that, and then we can discuss if you need.
So moved, Anderson.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, are there any questions? So this is the official appointment of Peter as the city administrator. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Cameron.
Aye.
Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams.
Aye.
Alderman Dash.
Aye.
Alderman Dolek.
Aye.
Motion passes. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Peter, you have anything to say?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and the city council. I am humbled at the trust that you've placed in me to stand beside you and help lead the city, along with our fantastic department heads. I've been here 10 years, and these have been the greatest 10 years of my professional career, so I can only hope that it continues, and I, we have a great team here, and I just hope the successes that we've had over the last 10 years, we can continue and build upon. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now we'll go on to number six.
We got none now.
You got none?
Nope.
Changed your mind, if you have a comment about public, anything that's on the agenda? No? Okay. The consent agenda, it's kind of a long one here, so I am going to ask the administrator to just give us a thumbnail sketch of the items here that we're about to approve.
Absolutely, sir, thank you very much. Whenever there's a change in administrator for any municipality, or a manager, or a mayor for that matter, there's a number of organizations that we are part of that we have delegates for and alternates. Usually the delegate is the mayor, and the alternate is the city administrator. So with Joe's retirement and my appointment, we need to do some housekeeping, and we have a litany, as the mayor had mentioned. This would be authorizing me as the new delegate, new, I'm sorry, designated signatory for the city's bills. Each of our checks that go out to pay our accounts payable have to have two signatures on them. One is the city treasurer, Rich Tibbetts, the other is the city administrator. So my name will be on them, replacing Joe Wade's. We also have the IMRF, which is the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund. We need to have an authorized agent. I was the authorized agent. As I'm moving into the administrator role, we will have the assistant to the city administrator, Lloyd Austin, be the new authorized agent. We have a resolution for our North Suburban Employee Benefit Cooperative that is, manages our healthcare and our life insurance. I will be the, now appointed as the delegate, and Lloyd Austin will be appointed as the alternate. We also have a change for the alternate for our solid waste agency of Northern Cook County. As you know, we have Flood Brothers who collects the garbage, but the solid waste agency of Northern Cook County is who actually disposes of the garbage, so I have to be appointed as the alternate. The mayor will stay on as the director. Then we have the Northwest Municipal Conference, which is a cooperative of approximately 27 municipalities, all of us around us who come together for the greater good of all municipalities. The mayor, once again, is the delegate, and I will be the new alternate. And then we have another housekeeping item. This is from the police department. Our police department has parking establishment agreements with most of our HOAs, our housing, our HOAs in our multifamily communities. This will be the next in the link of the chains. This is for the Willow Woods condominiums, Pelawaki Entities, which is Pelawaki Plaza, the Prospect Crossing Shopping Center, Holiday and Express, and the Motel 6 of Prospect Heights.
So with that, we need a motion to approve.
So moved, Morgan Adams.
Second.
Since it is a consent agenda, if you had questions, you would have asked them already, so roll call, please.
Alderman Cameron.
Aye.
Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams.
Aye.
Alderman Dash.
Aye.
And Alderman Dolek.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Old business, none. New business, item A. Ordinance 02514, staff memo and ordinance granting certain variations to allow an accessory structure, detached garage, to be constructed at 407 West Dorset. This is the first reading.
Only a first.
Need a motion to approve?
Oh, this one just.
Oh, first reading, no waiver, okay. So just the first reading, it'll come up again at the. So just a first reading, it'll come up again at the next council meeting for approval. If you have questions, give Dan a call.
The, just to let you know, the ENICS are here tonight should you have any questions of them themselves. It's the situation of a, an accessory structure within the buildable area in front of the house, a detached garage, and got a five to two positive recommendation from the ZBA.
Did you want to say anything?
I just, I think we won't have to answer any question or any concerns or.
Well, we got the whole file, so we were able to spend the whole nice weekend reading about your plans.
If you have other questions, I got all the answers.
No, any questions? So next meeting, it'll be on for approval. Thank you. Item B, waiver of first reading, Ordinance O-2515, Staff Memo and Ordinance Granting Certain Variations to Allow an Accessory Structure, A pergola at 13 South Parkway. This is a request for the waiver of the first reading. Need a motion to approve? We'll talk about it once we get it on the floor. So don't all rush into.
So move, Morgan Adams.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments?
I'd like to need approval for a pergola.
Because Dan says so. Just for everybody's information, under the city's law coverage ordinance, it defines accessory structures as anything that is placed on or into the ground with or without walls, a structure, and a pergola is limited to only 200 square feet. It's been the standard, like a small gazebo, a small covered patio. In this particular case, the applicants were seeking a pergola, 400 square feet, to kind of make an outdoor living space in their home they just built in the last couple of years. They took an older home down and built it there. They had some hardships with loss of existing mature trees due to the health and conditions of them. Additionally, one of the things we're looking at in the rewrite of the code, which I'll get into shortly, is the restrictive nature of the accessory structure where if we're allowed three buildings, one in excess of 400 square feet, the code says that has to be a detached garage. There's no other alternative for it. So that limits things like pergolas, gazebos, sheds, those covered type outdoor spaces at only 200 square feet. So the, the, some of the items that have been brought up to discuss in the rewrite is, does, if we limit the size of those accessory structures under what would be considered a habitable space, under 400 or at 400, under 500 square feet of the code, then they get a 200 square foot shed and then another one. They're still at the maximum limit of three accessory structures and they're still under the 1,000 square feet.
Oh, okay.
Based on those conditions, the ZBA unanimously authorized. Additionally, if the app can, wanted to choose to build in a detached garage at some future date, they'd have to get the ordinance resend, take that structure out because they would not be permitted to have it. That's the condition that's on there. So there are some safety checks put into the ordinance, drafted ordinance.
Okay. Yeah, when I first read it last week, I thought 400 square feet, like wow, that's big. But now as you explain it, okay, there's a limit of under 1,000 square feet total.
And you're thinking about going up to 400? I mean, not this one, I'm talking.
No, we're, we're looking at the 400 square foot max, or excuse me, I misspoke. The max accessory structure is 200 square feet. We were looking to give that, so you'd have your 400 and then a garden shed at 200 and then the third one at 800, 200. So you're still under 1,000 square feet. I apologize for my speaking there, so up to 400 square.
Up to for accessory.
Other than a detached.
Right. Okay. So any questions?
And this person is here tonight if you have any questions.
So we'll go on to item C then.
We need to.
No, we have to.
Just not with it today. So this is a waiver of the first reading. We have a first and a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cameron.
Aye.
Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams.
Aye.
Alderman Dash.
Aye.
Alderman Dolek.
Aye.
Motion passes. Now we'll go on to the second reading. Ordinance O-2515, Staff Memo and Ordinance Granting Certain Variations to Allow an Accessory Structure, A pergola at 13 South Parkway. Need a motion to approve the second reading?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cameron.
Aye.
Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams.
Aye.
Alderman Dash.
Aye.
Alderman Dolek.
Aye.
Motion passes. So Dan, she can contact you?
Yes. Finish, finish up the permit requirements.
Thank you. Item D, Resolution R-2553, A Staff Memo and Resolution Authorizing an Intergovernmental Agreement with Cook County for Phase 1 Engineering Services and Award Up to $111,200 in County Grants Towards Preliminary Engineering Costs for the Installation of the Willow Road Sidewalk Project. Need a motion to approve?
So move, Anderson.
Second, Cameron.
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
For the, well, for the attorney or for Peter. When we get these, are they sending us this, this IGA?
This is their IGA.
So they do the work on?
This is Cook County's IGA that we just adopted.
And these like, are these standard documents?
This, exactly. It's the same IGA, just that we've done for the last 10 years I've been here.
Different project.
Yeah.
They don't like to give it to negotiate.
No, that's what I was, that's what I was asking, yeah.
When they're giving us 111,000, I'm, I'm going to take their, and we haven't had any issues with the eight investing Cook grants that we've, we've been able to receive over the last 10 years, so.
Okay. So we have a first and a second. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Cameron.
Aye.
Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams.
Aye.
Alderman Dash.
Aye.
Alderman Dolek.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item E, Resolution R-2554, Staff Memo and Resolution Authorizing a Civil Engineering Service Agreement with Gualt Hamilton Associates, Inc. for Phase 1 Design Engineering Services for the Willow Road Sidewalk Project for a not-to-exceed fee of $138,946, subject to Attorney, the City Attorney, approval. Need a motion to approve?
So move, Anderson.
Second.
This is just the.
Follow-up resolution to the intergovernmental agreement, the, the grant we got with the invested Cook covers 80% of this phase one.
Okay, so we're spending 17,000 of city money.
About 27,000.
And 111,000 county money. We like that. That's always good. That's a good ratio.
80% is awesome.
So we have a motion and a second. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Yeah.
Alderman Cameron.
This happened to me.
Alderman Cameron.
Aye.
Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams.
Aye.
Alderman Dash.
Aye.
Alderman Dolek.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item F, Resolution R-2555, A Staff Memo and Resolution Expressing the City Council of Prospect Heights's Commitment to the Illinois Department of Transportation That the City of Prospect Heights Finds An On-Road Bike Lane Or Shared Use Path Does Not Fit Within The Development Plan For Property Along Illinois Route 83. Need a motion to approve?
So move.
Got a second?
I'll second.
If I could explain.
Can I hear a question about what that, why that came up?
Yes, let me, let me explain this. This is a brand-new requirement from the Illinois Department of Transportation. We are putting in a, we're in the process of, we've gotten grants for and are doing the preliminary design engineering for a sidewalk to fill in the gaps on North Almeris Road up to Hints. So this is, this new requirement from IDOT is a pledge from the city to IDOT saying that we will not on our own or ask them to put in a bike path adjacent to this. This is so brand-new, I had to create a resolution out of thin air. We finally got a sample resolution from IDOT at about 4:30 this afternoon. So I'm hopeful they will take this because if they don't, we'll just have to come back with their, with their resolution. But that's how new it is.
So what, what happens when people on bikes are on the sidewalk?
That is an e-bike issue.
No, regular bikes or e-bikes or electric bikes or scooters?
We are working.
Mr. Administrator?
I'm currently working on the issue of that.
Yeah.
I don't know what a normal bicycle.
A normal bicycle can go on a sidewalk.
There you go.
Under the age of 16 or.
The old-fashioned kind, yeah.
If they're on the street, they have to follow the rules of the road.
Yeah, right, okay. Sorry, thank you.
Any other questions? So we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cameron.
Aye.
Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams.
Aye.
Alderman Dash.
Aye.
Alderman Dolek.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item G, Resolution R-2556, A Staff Memo Resolution of the City Council Authorizing The Execution Of An Intergovernmental Agreement Between The City Of Prospect Heights And The Prospect Heights Park District Regarding The Prospect Heights Natural Resources Commission. Need a motion to approve?
So move, Morgan Adams.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Anderson.
We have a motion and a second, Peter?
If I, if I can put some meat behind this. This was a request from the Park District. For the last 10 years I've been here, I've actually been in liaison to the Natural Resources Commission and the Natural Resources Commission has done work on both city property and park district property. And we, with the Park District, have had, lack of a better term, a handshake deal on how to, regards to the Natural Resources Commission and how we manage them and how we manage our own properties. This just solidifies or officiates that handshake deal. So if you, you look through what our requirements are, what the Park District requirements are, it's just what we're already doing. It's just immortalized in an, in an intergovernmental agreement instead of just the handshake deal.
Any questions?
No.
We have a motion and a second?
A motion, so move, Anderson.
We do.
So we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cameron.
Aye.
Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams.
Aye.
Alderman Dash.
Aye.
Alderman Dolek.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item 10, Staff and Elected Officials and Commission Reports. They will have a, the July Financial Report by Assistant Finance Director Bob Tannehill.
Yes, thanks Mayor and City Council members. 25% of the year has passed so far. We're at about 21.3% of the budget on revenues and expenses are 23% of the budget. The Water and Sewer Fund revenues are within budget expectations as, as is expenses. Over the last couple of months, we have received some money being paid on some large outstanding balances over, that we've been putting out letters and also in collections. We collected over about $5,000 worth of back pay on sewer accounts. We still continue to monitor those balances, we follow up with letters and also send ones out to collections. Been a big help has been the Building Department, working with them. When people come in for their permits, we check their balances for utility billing and if there's outstanding balances out there, we make sure those get paid before we issue permits out there. So kudos to the Building Department to keep me advised of what's out there and the permits coming in. Also, for next month, we'll be sending out letters, starting our vehicle sticker campaign for the 25, 26 vehicle stickers for those who have not bought those stickers. We did request a file from the Illinois Secretary of State, their database to show all the registered plates in Prospect Heights. We'll be comparing that to the, our system, our software system and we'll go through those a little heavy to make sure that we get the right vehicles and the right residents. We'll be sending letters out. The first letter of that phase will be a question. Your vehicle has come up in the database and it shows that you not have bought a sticker for that vehicle. If that's an error, please contact the city so we can fix or rectify that situation. Hopefully we'll get people to respond to us and we can get those fixed. What we saw in the past are people who sell their vehicles and they don't take the plate off the car and those plates go with the car or they take the plates and they put them in their garage thinking that's all they have to do, but they still show up on the database which shows in, hey, your car, you still have a registered car. And as the City of Prospect Heights, we don't know if that car's been sold or if those plates been transferred. And that's why you may get a letter stating that we don't see that you bought a sticker for this vehicle. And that's why that first letter is more of a, a question of, hey, why is this showing up like this? Please advise us what's going on. What you need to do is when you sell your vehicles, you have to have those plates canceled or removed from the Secretary of State by just letting them know that the car's been sold and to have those plates voided or canceled in the system so they don't show up on the database as a registered vehicle, the Prospect Heights. So we're going to be starting that next, probably in the next couple of weeks, comparing our files and also scrubbing them to make sure that we have the right information and then we'll be sending out a letter on that. And this would be happening within the Finance Department. Is there any questions regarding that?
Thank you.
Thanks.
So we'll stay on that, well, we'll send you switched spots here. We'll start on this end, anything?
No report.
Staff on the left, no? Peter?
Sir.
Who else we got? Dan?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Two items tonight. First, I'd like to introduce to you the newest addition to the building team, Elise DeSau. Elise is our new part-time Administrative Assistant Permit Clerk. She started with us about two weeks ago. She's a graduate of UIC with Architectural Studies degree and is an interest in urban planning and she's picking up very well. She's a quick study and a great addition to the team.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Secondly, as I mentioned a minute ago, the Council approved the rewrite of the zoning code and it is a tedious process. It has been being worked on. Michael Blue from Tusk Associates, our consultant, has been drafting, we've chat, you know, sections, modernizing, eliminating, identifying areas that be questioned. And so far to date, he's submitted chapters three, five, six, seven, 10, and 11 for staff review. He's also taken all the use categories that are in text format in each of the district chapters and has drafted a table format, which is going to take a lot of work to scrub. We're probably going to have to look at consolidating uses, matching similar uses alike to try and tame down this table. We had a very good sit-down session last Thursday and went through the administrative section and the planned unit development sections, which cleaned up some edits, get that. When we get through these, this portion of the code, we will be scheduling a review by the Steering Committee, which is represented from the Council, ZBA. We do have a member from Public Architect that participated in the, up the analysis, the review analysis to kind of go through, does this make sense in a real way? And then bring that to the Planning and Zoning Board for a text amendment at the appropriate time. While that's going on, they're still drafting the next sections, which is the definitions, getting into chapter four, non-conformities, getting into parking signs and there. So we have another sit-down session on September 5th. At that time, going through this, we'll also take a look to see if we can pinpoint a better defined schedule, but I'm very happy with the progress we're making since we started this. This is a lot of work that's gone into it and one of the nice things is, is they've added a lot of diagrams, examples, summary charts at the beginning of the chapters and then flow charts on process. So that being said, at the, it'll be a much more user-friendly zoning code when we get done with it. So I look forward to wrapping this, this initial part of the drafting down and getting it in front of the committees for their review and text amendments.
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of quick things. We haven't talked about Levy 37 in a while. But that's all right. It's a great day for it. There's three parts to Levy 37 to get the area certified for the map revision, for the flood control. One is the sluice gate that we've been fighting with for years, trying to get to this point. Today, we were notified that IDOT approved the revised set of project plans. So at that point, it goes back to IDNR to go out for bid for the sluice gate portion of it. We were at this point about a year and a half ago. The project as designed came in way overbid, or it was constructed to an expense that we couldn't handle. So we refined what we needed to get the minimum requirements and what we need to work with out there. So we're at that good point. IDNR will now have it in their hands, starting tomorrow, to get it ready to go out to bid. So we're excited about that. The second step is the wall repair. We're waiting on IDOT with a permit. We're expecting probably about another two months to get a final response from them, and then hopefully we'll be in the same place with that. And again, the third step is the recertification, which is still running in tandem to everything, we're working with Mount Prospect. So when these two projects are completed, that project is turnkey ready to go off to FEMA. So we just haven't talked about Levy 37 in a while, and it's, it's a good day, because we, we'll get to the next step. We're moving forward. It might be inches at a time, but we're still moving forward. So. Second thing, the MWRD project going along Wolf Road. I've talked to a lot of residents in the past couple of weeks regarding it. MWRD is working on relining the sewer, the main interceptor that runs from Hints Road down south of Camp McDonald Road. They've been working on this project for a while. It's a big pipe. It's about 60 inches or so in diameter. If you can imagine how big that is. They're slowly moving south. It will close down Old Willow Road for a while for westbound traffic. We expected it months ago, but their schedule is a little bit fluid, and they've been kind of dealing with some other changes they weren't expecting. So that is coming. We'll keep everyone posted. There'll be information on our website and, and social media when that comes up. Probably the end of September, October is when that, they'll get to that point. But they're making their way down. It's a big project. I think it was bid out at like $46 million, so it's, it's not a, a small little feat. And thirdly, our Willow, our Willow Trails stormwater project, which is the biggest stormwater thing we've ever done on the east side, except for the Army Corps and Levy 37, of course, just got started. Our contractor is working with the utilities that need to be moved so these pipes can be installed. So it's slow to get rolling visually for folks, but it's coming. The utilities are in the process. There's a water main and a couple of gas lines that are in conflict right now. So we'll see potholing out there, a few barricades, and that's going to start picking up speed. And that is the change of Willow Trails Park from a small detention area to a larger detention area, an additional stormwater piping to try to help the residents on the east side when we get the massive downpours, to have detention versus a lot of the parking lots that have suffered over the years with 20, 30, 40 cars at a time getting swamped. So it's slowly getting there, but we are moving forward. So I just want to give you a little something on that. That's it, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. Real quick, I'd like to highlight our summer celebration event that was done in combination with Omni Link Together, River Trails, and the Prospect Heights Park District, along with School District 21. It's an event we host every year on the east side in the park. Free backpacks and school supplies were provided to over 700 children. This year, children were able to get free haircuts, make some crafts, and have their faces painted. A very fun event right before school starts. Also, the PHP Summer Outreach Program is officially done for the year. The last trip, kids were taken to the Chicago Fire Game, and I'd like to recognize the Police Department staff, also all of our Police Department volunteers and Omni counselors who contributed time and effort this summer season to chaperone kids to various events and various places. And lastly, we are still hiring, we're in the process of hiring part-time police officers, entry-level police officers, and certified lateral police officers. We do have one for each of those that is in the process right now, background, and some of their testing. Surprisingly, we have seen a large increase in applicants this year, which has not been for the last couple of years. So it's a pleasant surprise.
Good.
That is all. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay. Item 11, approval of warrants. Oh, I did forget about you. I told you I wouldn't, but I did.
I just have one, one item, Mr. Mayor, and it's a question for Peter. Peter, I'm wondering if you're going to still be our Santa Claus?
I have no idea what you're talking about, sir. That's a real, that's a real Santa Claus. That is the real Santa Claus that we make sure he comes here. He does a special visit. Yes. Santa Claus will be here. We will make sure he is here. Any little kids watching, he's the real Santa Claus.
All right. Item 11, approval of warrants. Will the deputy, well, the lawyer, please read the approval of expenditures and wire payments.
Yes. For the approval expenditures tonight, we have a total amount of $176,603.86. Wire payments, we have an 8-8, 2025 payroll in the amount of $197,631.85. We have a July IMRF payment in the amount of $15,692.09. And then we have two manual checks, first being the Illinois Secretary of State in the amount of $453, and Wheel &amp; Body &amp; Motor Works for the squad repair of 604, 604 squad repair in the amount of $1,629.57, bringing tonight's total warrant amount to $392,010.37 for approval.
So we need a motion to approve?
So moved, Anderson.
Second, Morgan Adams.
Motion and a second. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Dash?
Aye.
Alderman Dolek?
Aye.
Motion passes. Any public comment on non-agenda matters from anybody? No? Okay. We will have an executive session. We'll go over what sections that is, but the first part is the appointment, uh, the appointment, employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, specific individuals who serve as independent contractors in a park, recreational, or educational setting, or city setting. So what, and then the other item is litigation. And those are covered by, what is, what is that called? Exceptions 111?
Yeah, Exceptions in the Open Meetings Act.
Those are covered by Exceptions in the Open Meetings Act, Section 1 and 11. So I need a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Anderson, second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Okay. We are back in regular session. We were in executive session for the purposes of litigation and personnel. In executive session, the council agreed to pay Peter a salary of $172,724, and a annual vehicle stipend of $4,500, and a technology stipend of $1,500, all effective August 5th, 2025. Can I get a motion to approve that?
So moved, Morgan Adams.
We have a motion?
No second.
And a second? Roll call, please.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Dash?
Aye.
Alderman Dolek?
Aye.
Motion passes. Need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Pose. We're adjourned.